Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our October 2 Webster Central School District Board of Education meeting. Would you please stand with us as we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the record of political stance of one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, may we please have a motion to move out of executive session?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. If you would, please take a look at your agenda. I am aware of one addition under Roman numeral five, letter C. We'll make a number two, which will be a report on the resolution. Was it area two? Area two? Okay, so it'll be a report from the area two resolution report. Are there any other changes to the agenda tonight? Then may we have a motion to accept the agenda with the amended?
So moved?
Second, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Agenda now is set. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the board at this time, and we ask that any comments be brief, no longer than five minutes, and related to school matters. Personnel matters, whether directly or indirectly, will not be discussed in public. Personnel concerns can be addressed in writing to the board. With that being said, is there anyone in the audience tonight that would like to address the board? All right, thank you. We'll now move into our student liaisons. And I usually call on Lorenzo first, but I can change it up and...
I'll go first.
Okay.
Good evening, board members. It's hard to believe that we are already halfway through the first quarter of this 2014-2015 school year. Seniors are hard at work on their college essays and applications, and everyone at Webster Thomas is getting geared up for the Spirit Week competition coming next week. Tonight is our annual open house. Our parents will be meeting our teachers and learning the curriculum for this year. This year, there's a new open format that will allow parents more freedom in learning about our classes and teachers. The PTSA will be selling spirit wear in the main hallway. Also, a variety of clubs will be sharing information to parents, and the girls' tennis team will be having their annual bake sale outside of the library. We hope our parents will enjoy all the activities tonight. We would like to congratulate Kira Ashton, Sarah Gekel, Tyler Court, Megan Lewis, and Doug Whalen for being recognized as National Merit Scholarship Students. The students placed in the top 5% of more than 1.5 million students who took the PSAT exam last year. One of our senior voice students is traveling to Nashville, Tennessee, to perform at the Grand Old Avery this October. Lucie Rose Barone is one of 670 music students who were chosen from the 2.5 million students who performed in local music festivals this year. We are extremely proud of Lucie Rose, and we wish you good luck and safe travels. Two weekends ago, we had several staff members who partook in the Rochester Half Marathon. Mrs. Smura, Mrs. Donovan, and Mr. Hanley completed the race. It is great to see some of our teachers still racing. In other running news, the McQuade Invitational was this previous weekend. Runners from all around the U.S. and even some from Canada came to Rochester to participate in this highly competitive race. Our own Nick Niemtuh was the top runner from all of Section 5, which is a huge achievement. We'd like to congratulate Nick and all the Thomas Cross Country runners. The Thomas Titan football team faced Rush Henrietta last weekend and unfortunately was defeated by one point, but the team is having a great season with a 3-1 record. They play the Rochester Leadership Academy this weekend. We wish them good luck in the rest of their season. On October 21, there's a junior class field trip to visit college campuses in the area. Students have the opportunity to visit Brockport, Geneseo, MCC, Nazareth, St. John Fisher, RIT, Robert's Wesleyan, and the University of Rochester. There will be a presentation by an admissions counselor and a campus tour along with lunch in the dining hall. This is a great chance for our juniors to get a taste of local colleges. As October begins, everyone at Webster Thomas is settling in for a great year. We hope all of you will come out to support the Titans sports teams and all the other great activities happening at Webster Thomas. Now, Mr. Gomina, I'd like to send my condolences to the Pirates. We hope to see them and the Yankees in the series next year.
Mr. Guston, too. Mr. Guston.
So Lorenzo will be replaced next month, just so everyone knows. Thank you, Lorenzo, for your last report.
You know, Lorenzo, the other day, I was lucky enough to go to the Schrader-Thomas soccer game, and I noticed some students broadcasting, a radio broadcast. Do you know anything about that at all?
I do not. I'll have to look into that. But I know that at Webster Thomas, we recently started a sports kind of show to our morning show segment, and that's put together by our junior Victor Dangelmeyer. He's very into the video production, and on the morning news, he does a little weekly catch-up for the sports. But I'll have to look into that.
So it looks like we've got some, a radio program going on broadcasting sports.
That's cool.
That's great.
Mike, I believe it's on WBER 90.5.
Oh, okay.
FM?
FM, the alternative station.
Yep.
They do the, do both seasons and things, yeah.
Yeah, it was very, it was nice to see that. Okay, Maria?
Good evening, board members. I will be representing Schrader this evening. Our Rotary Interact is now up and running with two new advisors, Marsha Lindsey and Monica Ikone. This club's motto is "Service Above Self" and is another venue for students to become involved in meaningful volunteerism and community service activities. The school counselors went to workshops this past weekend at RIT to learn about changes at the, about the ACT and also met with Rochester area colleges to up, to learn, to hear updates from each of the college admissions representatives to stay current in helping students select and apply for college. The following seminars had been conducted in the College and Career Center. All ninth graders learned to learn about transitions into high school issues, anti-bullying messages, and stressful, and how to, stress and how to succeed in high school. Eleventh graders are currently meeting to discuss the college search process and necessary exams, currently meeting, and other requirements for applying to college next year. All seniors met to open their Common Application account to apply to colleges. Those planning on going into the military or two-year colleges are advised on other paths. Our counselors have, have a Facebook page that posts almost all events, deadlines for parents, and lots of fun and exciting pictures. This week, Oswego, Niagara, Oneonta, Boston University, and many other colleges come to visit and talk to the students in small groups and answer any questions they have. On September 19, the goal program spent the day participating in team-building activities at the Bayview YMCA as part of our physical education program. Students had a chance to try their hand in archery, rock climbing, and kayaking. Our show choir is invited to the Formal Show Choir America in Orlando, Florida on February 14 at the Hard Rock Live Theater and will be representing the whole state of New York. We will have, we have had many students excel in our Language Other Than English program and continue their studies of languages and other cultures beyond high school. Michaela McNautin went into, went to continue studying Spanish at the college level last year, worked on translating side-by-side with her professor on women's rights violations. Louis Fusilli decided to graduate early and was accepted into the RIT. Louis studied French, Latin, and Spanish at Schrader and decided to add Italian to his repertoire by studying abroad in Italy. Michaela and Louis make Webster proud by following their passions, pursuing their love for language. Souls for Souls is a project initiated locally by 10-year-old Tracy Weinstein, whose goal is to collect 2,500 pairs of shoes and travel to Guatemala to distribute them. Former student Dennis Costanza was awarded the Golden Apple Teaching Award by Channel 8, now teaching at School 20. Last night, we celebrated Ty Lambert and Greg Kennedy's 25th year of coaching boys volleyball together. According to New York State Volleyball Coordinator, this is the longest JV and varsity coaching duo in the New York State history. Schrader's girls' tennis won their division for the fourth senior year, fourth straight year. Tomorrow is our homecoming against Rush Henrietta. Good luck to our boys varsity team, and thank you. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, Maria? Thank you.
Thank you. Maria, you can come back next month.
Okay.
Lorenzo, you stay home.
He probably has play practice anyways. I don't see the rep from WTA, nor do I see a PTSA rep in the audience, so we'll move on. We do have a newly formed department called Humanities, and even though Humanities encompasses this wide variety of departments, tonight, I believe, they really are going to concentrate on how our students are developing their literacy skills, K-12. I hope I'm right on that, Terry. So why don't you bring your crew up?
Well, good evening, Board of Education members, and thank you for the opportunity, and thank you to Mr. Gomina for the opportunity to share just a little bit of the work that has been undertaken through this new form, newly-formed Humanities Department. And with me at the table are three of Webster's teachers who will be speaking on behalf of the many dedicated professionals who are working hard to ensure that our students are prepared to be their very best. With us tonight are Kate Hesler, Melissa Phillips, and Larry Wall. And just after assuming my position as Director of Humanities, I was sent an article by one of our parents, and the article title was titled "Why We Need Humanities in the Google World." And this is certainly very timely for a number of reasons. And in his piece, Haig argues that the shared moral and cultural memory that we have developed through the intersection of our literature, arts, culture, and history is the true cornerstone of the digitally-connected world that we live in. And needless to say, much of this article resonated with me, and his definition of Humanities has provided a helpful framework for us as a team as we begin to shape what this new configuration could be. And so we always want to anchor our work back in those documents which are critical for our district's success, our mission, our vision, and our core beliefs. And these have been powerful drivers to support our many challenges and clear lenses to help us, or support our many successes, and clear lenses to help us address our numerous challenges. So then what is the Humanities Department, or as my daughter likes to say, "Oh, the humanities," she says that to me frequently, um, thank you, be performing in the Catskills?
That is bad.
Yeah, I know, I know. She's fourth, she's in fourth grade. I had to support her.
I thought she was Irish.
Yeah, she's Irish. We're not, we're not good joke tellers, storytellers, maybe. Bringing these together, these disciplines under one umbrella provides powerful opportunities to replicate the sort of world that our students will be entering once they graduate from Schrader or Thomas. Rather than experience a world where content is siloed by narrow descriptors, we envision this model will better represent the interconnected and interdependent world that relies on transferable skills and flexible thinking. In some places, our system, we've seen that happening already, and you'll hear about some of those bright spots today. And for other areas, this new structure does lend itself to exploring links that maybe hadn't been considered in the past. And so then how do we help support our classroom teachers in seeing these possibilities? And really, as we see it, it is about supporting at the grassroots level, our colleagues with the various people, systems, and structures that we currently have in place. And crucial to this work is the role of the lead teacher. And as you know, the lead teacher position has been restructured, particularly at the K-5 level for this year, so that every elementary grade in every elementary building is represented by a lead teacher, and they provide a valuable voice both at building and district-level leadership teams. And we'll continue to cultivate the cadre model that we developed through the grades three through five Integrated Literacy Frame implementation last year, and we've expanded that model to both primary and secondary levels. And we're excited to tap into the expertise of our teachers on special assignment, including the two that are directly connected to the Humanities Department. And so as Mr. Sufaleto said, the focus of our presentation will be on the develop, how our students are developing their literacy skills and the work traditionally undertaken through ELA. We did want to just make mention to the board of the various other groups that fall under the Humanities umbrella and the work that they're undertaking for this year. And the teachers are deeply engaged in their fields in finding ways to support and promote career, college, and community readiness for all of our students. And so as we came into this newly-formed department, we felt it was important to get a sense of where this group had been previously, where it is today, and where we hope to see it going into the future. And so we framed our work around the Concerns-Based Adoption Model. And we've used this model for the adoption of a variety of common resources over the last number of years, be it math expressions, Lucy Cawkins writings, PBIS, and the CARE Model. And last year, when we started to adopt the Common Standards-Based Instructional Resources for our three-through-five classes, we used this model to gauge our progress through the course of the year. And this provides us with a great way, not only to get a sense of where we're at, but to also provide support that is real-time and directed at the teachers in the way that they most need it. And in 2013-14, as you can see, for the vast majority of our ELA and LAC groups, we were just starting to learn about those common literacy resources that we will begin to develop in 2014-15. Our grades three through five teachers were just starting to implement it and really making sense of what this means for their classroom. And so many of them were focused on those critical issues such as time and resources. And so for us, we felt it was important to focus time and resources for them, giving tremendous amount of collaborative work in order to best make those resources fit the needs of their students. And so taking the same model, we see the progress over the course of just one school year. Our grades three through five teachers have truly made the resources their own, and they're implementing them in a way that fits their style. We've found wonderful ways to build connections in those three-through-five classrooms and explore content in ways that we hadn't thought possible prior. Some of our other groups are progressing at different rates, but what this does is just give us a snapshot of where we're at and help our team best support our classroom teachers. We know we've made some nice steps, but we know there's a tremendous amount of work ahead of us, and it's going to be critical that we provide the support that our teachers need. And I'd like to now introduce Kate Hesler and Melissa Phillips, who will discuss the work that is being done at the elementary level.
Thanks, Terry. As members of the board, you may be familiar with this graphic showing our Balanced Literacy Framework. Starting last school year in each of our seven elementary buildings, we implemented some common reading and writing resources at the intermediate grades to address all of these pieces of balanced literacy. We refer to these common resources in addition to our common pacing plans and content area connections as our Integrated Literacy Frames. This year, we began Year Two of implementation of the Literacy Frames. Our third-through-fifth grade teachers worked diligently this summer on literacy curriculum projects connected to these resources. Classroom teachers identified areas of focus for each grade level, met together in teams of seven, including one representative from each of the seven buildings, to refine and adapt some of the common resources we started working with last year. Their work included streamlining lessons, adding additional foundational skills components, strengthening connections to integrated content area learning standards, and creating and adapting common assessments. The structure of these teams encouraged voices from each building to be heard in the collaborative process and allowed for a direct line of communication back to each building in each grade-level PLC. Over 60 teachers met for close to 100 hours of collaborative work time this summer. Those teachers were also surveyed about their experiences this summer in making adaptations to the frames. As you can see in these percentages, almost all teachers either strongly agreed or agreed with these statements, showing confidence that their work would be implemented in classrooms this school year, that the work was teacher-directed and teacher-led, and that their participation in these collaborative efforts was also an opportunity for them to learn and grow as teaching professionals. I'd like to also share a couple of written quotes from my colleagues about the summer work. So the first one? "The format of the project was critical in the success of the work. One representative from each of the seven elementary buildings was a stakeholder in each work session. The work was entirely teacher-led, and the level of conversations was professional, with the work as our focus. It was also largely successful because of the collaborative work that the grade-level teacher leadership cadres had done during the school year. It has become a community of trust, and thus we had a very positive and productive outcome from our summer work project." And then the second quote? "The work that we accomplished was teacher-driven and will make our modules easier to use. Shortening some lessons and revising those that were not effective will allow us to have the time and structure for a balanced literacy program that hopefully will have a measurable impact on students." So speaking of some of those measurable impacts, we wanted to take a moment to share with you some of the data utilized to benchmark our students' progress in ELA and literacy over the last couple of years as compared to our other local Munder County districts. So looking back to the 2012-2013 school year, this would be prior to our work around literacy at grades three through five, we saw our third-grade students' New York State ELA scores placing us 10th out of the 19 local districts. We saw our fourth-grade students placing us 9th out of the 19 local districts. Then last year, our work on the Integrated Frames really centered on anchoring our program to the learning standards and on structuring that effective collaboration among the seven buildings. Our focus was not on test preparation or on specifically raising these test scores. We saw many indicators of growth in our classrooms and through evidence in our students' work. We were pleased to see that in addition to those strong indicators of growth in our classrooms, we did see growth in our students' state assessment scores relative to other local districts. Last year's fourth graders, which was the same group of students who had in 2013 placed 10th out of the 19 district as third graders, moved up to place us 6th out of 19. Similarly, our fifth graders, who had placed 9th the year prior, now place 6th relative to other local schools. In keeping with the Webster Literacy Vision Statement and Balanced Literacy Framework, and this was established back in 2009, we continue to refine our programs by focusing in on specific parts of this framework as well as the interplay of all of these elements as a whole. So focusing in on the sections that are highlighted this year, our K-2 classrooms have implemented some common interactive read-aloud resources this year for the purpose of building young students' background knowledge, strengthening their listening comprehension, and for boosting vocabulary development. I'll turn things over to Melissa, who will give us a picture of what these resources look like in everyday instructional practice.
Thank you. When a teacher reads a story from one of these resources out loud, children can focus on listening comprehension and on acquiring new vocabulary. Another feature of these read-aloud resources is that they allow students to explore topics of high interest and provide opportunities for integration of rich science and social studies content. Some of the topics selected by our kindergarten-through-second-grade teachers this year include nursery rhymes, fables, the five senses, the human body, cycles in nature, fairy tales, and taking care of the earth. This is a picture of a first-grade classroom at Plank South. As the teacher is reading the story, images are displayed on the smartboard that the children can look at. The girl on the left has the special job of turning the pages when the teacher has given her a signal. The teacher also stops from time to time to have students discuss story in pairs and to highlight new vocabulary. This purposeful attention to building oral language is important in grades kindergarten through second because students are just beginning to learn how to read printed words. The students are immersed in all kinds of print and early reading activities throughout the rest of their day, and this particular part of the day is truly dedicated to listening. We know that listening, speaking, and strong language skills are necessary prerequisites for reading and writing. If our students can develop strong oral language skills early on, they will better equip to understand more complex language that they encounter in their own reading in later grades. We know that the, one of the most single powerful indicators of long-term success in school is on-grade-level reading by third grade. We believe that the implementation of a strong, research-based, foundation literacy skills resource will better position our students to meet this benchmark in coming years. Foundational skills are represented as the phonemic awareness and phonics portions of our Balanced Literacy Program, leading to fluency in decoding words and in word recognition. In order to make sure our students have these early literacy skills, we've created a kindergarten-through-second-grade resource, research committee consisting of classroom teachers, literacy specialist, special educators, enrichment specialists, and administrators. This year, they are charged with evaluating and choosing a resource to address these foundational skills across kindergarten through second grade. The committee has already selected and started to evaluate these resources using a comprehensive rubric that is anchored in best practices for early literacy development. We anticipate that we'll be able to make a thoughtfully determined choice by the end of the school, school year to be implemented next fall. And now I'd like to pass it on to Larry, who will be talking a little bit about our secondary literacy developments.
Thank you, Melissa. I'm pleased to have this opportunity to share a little bit with you about what's happening in English literacy across the curriculum and RTI, Response to Intervention classrooms at the middle and high school levels. What you'll see here is a timeline illustrating the process that most PLCs are following. In the spring and summer of this year, teams chose and adapted lessons to work with in common. During this school year, teams are piloting this, these lessons, following schedules best suited to the needs of their students. And finally, in the coming spring and summer, they will have the time and resources necessary to make adjustments for the 2015-16 school year. Having the district's support to work together during the natural cycle that every teacher follows of choose, adapt, try, change, and try again is a welcome opportunity. Linking all the departments you see in the corner of your screen to the larger idea of the Humanities offers an unprecedented chance for the district to help our students see and make the most of natural connections that already exist across our curricula. And we know that making these connections wherever possible is a vital survival skill for our students as they get ready for college, career, and community. Here are five quick examples of some of those connections. One of the nicest things in my new role has been to have the chance to see some of the great work that my colleagues are doing, and LAC teachers are a prime example of this. These teachers, along with their Read 180 and System 44 and RTI colleagues, help our middle school students become better communicators each day, which will help students in all of their classes. In fact, the work they do is so effective that it would be great if they could share some of their expertise this year with high school teachers. The next examples all illustrate the natural link that has always existed between social studies and English, but our newly-created Humanities Department will allow us to support and promote even greater connections. As it is, we've had social studies and English teachers working together to design an eighth grade capstone project to support students as they prepare for the Model UN. Just this week, all faculty at both middle schools were introduced to a writing handbook developed last school year that will offer consistent writing support to our middle school students. Additionally, our Humanities 12 course has challenged Webster students for more than 45 years to examine core questions with the help of an English and a social studies teacher, making no distinction between the two disciplines. Finally, English 11 focuses on American literature, and 11th grade social studies is American history. Teachers in both classrooms have always seen the benefit of collaborating, but have rarely had the opportunities. This year, we have the best chance to make this happen, and our students deserve it. To return to the middle schools for just a moment, these two programs, System 44 and Read 180, deserve special mention. Developed by Scholastic, they allow our teachers to provide research-based literacy instruction to our students with greatest need. The materials and methods are high interest for middle school students, and they really make a difference. As we look forward, the work begun last spring and continuing through this year allows teachers to talk together about what good teaching looks like and to test new ideas with the support of each other and a district committed to providing the time necessary to ensure that we are serving our students to the best of our abilities. This work will naturally foster all that you see indicated here.
And as we have laid out for you, there has been much that has been accomplished in a, in a brief amount of time, but we know there is still plenty of work to do, both around the development of our students' literacy skills and the coalescing of our newly-formed Humanities Department. And in many ways, the timing for this has never been more right. Recent trends have placed a heavy emphasis on the study of science and technology for our students, and certainly we find much value in those fields. However, we do believe that the study of Humanities plays a critical role now and into the future for our students. The sort of thinking outlined above and encompassed by our varied disciplines are crucial for success regardless of our students' chosen field of endeavor. The Humanities, that study of our collective human expression, provide a powerful backdrop for preparing our students to truly be career, college, and community-ready. And with that... And with that, we thank you for the opportunity, and we'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Paul, can we start with you?
Sure. I do have a few questions. First of all, I love the graphics, so I don't know who put that all together, but very nice and appealing to me at least. But I do have a couple, I guess, technical questions. Terry, back on the slide, stages of concern, levels of use, could you give me an example of what management means in that grid? And compared to preparation, are they supposed to be cross-linked? Is it a, for example, at the middle school or the high school level? Yeah, that, those grids.
This one?
The next slide down, I think. Or even if, what do you mean by management, I guess?
Management is really starting to think about how you make, you're using the resources, and you're still thinking about time, how to make time for implementation, so it's still more focused on the teacher?
Is that teacher or student?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so this is where the teacher is at in terms of their role in implementing the change.
Okay, thank you. Larry, I think one question for you. Sorry, Catherine, Melissa, I don't have anything for you. Could you give an example of ELA 11 and Social Studies 11, maybe a common unit they're doing or something?
We're not there yet, but what, I taught 11th grade for the last fifteen years, and consistently, we would bump up against each other because we're doing American literature and the social studies teachers are doing US history. And most of us tried to honor those connections when we could, but we've never really had a chance to work together on a research project, for example. And there's really no reason why students can't perhaps do their social studies research with the help of their English teacher, or they can't maybe identify a topic and get some factual help from their social studies teacher. So, I did, one of those conference days in the beginning, I just gave every person a piece of paper and said, is there anything that you're interested in or that you'd like me to look at this year? And that came up again, you know? Why can't we find a way to help students make those connections that already exist?
Right.
So, I think the most specific and immediate example I can give you is that we want to try to bring the two departments together to look at research.
Okay. And that's, isn't that something the Common Core is looking towards, at least for English literacy, is research paper before you graduate?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Thanks. Mike?
Yeah, Larry. I'm not familiar with System 44. Can you go through that real quick?
Sure. Both of these programs were developed by Scholastic, and I just spoke with two of the teachers earlier in the week, and I was so excited because I didn't realize how it works. But System 44 is for middle school students who have greater needs. Read 180 is for students who have greater needs than the average reader but not quite as intensive as System 44. So, both of them are to help students become better readers, and they are, the teachers were saying that frequently, if a student is a struggling reader and they get to middle school, the support materials are geared toward a younger audience. And that helps students shut down right away. They don't want to do it because it's, you know, showing a greater weakness almost. But System 44 focuses on working on phonics skills, and then Read 180 focuses on just reinforcing reading skills. And the way that we're doing it here is, I think it's an hour and twenty-minute unit each one, but we have our classes. And so they've modified them a little bit, and basically there's twenty minutes of instruction, twenty minutes of computer use. And so with the computer use, there's activities that the students do, and the teacher said, you know, there's little rewards that students get, and she said, you know, it's so great to see it when a student succeeds, oh yes, you know, they got this thing done. And then there's independent reading. And the reason I'm so excited about it is because the teachers I spoke with are so excited, and they're reading teachers with lots of experience, and I think it's been about five or six years, and I'm in the ballpark, but I'm not exact, that we've been using this. And they were just so pleased with the results that they've seen students really be able to catch up like a year and a half in the course of using this program. And they can graduate out of it as well.
Okay. This is for anybody. So, listing about System 44, Read 180, what do we have comparable to those in elementary level?
Well, those two programs used in middle school really are research-based intervention pieces, and one thing that's comparable in the elementary level is the Level Literacy Intervention, LLI, often referred to and used similarly with students who are struggling and need extra support in catching up in their reading skills.
And then we have a team of literacy specialists in each building depending on the need of the building, who can provide both large group and then small group directed instruction.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate it.
Yes, good evening, everyone. First of all, I'm so pleased to see the progress in the performance of students. I know testing is a small part of our metrics, but it is an important one, and the gains were not insignificant, so congratulations to that, to all of you for that. But one of the things I also appreciated hearing, and I know this is now kind of our second full year of implementation at the elementary level, and I heard you and I read it too, that there is more of teacher encouragement to really take the materials, make them their own, adapt them. They know their students very, very well, and so I'm really pleased to see that. But one of the maybe stronger disappointments I heard last year was the extended length of time students were doing the deep read for certain materials, that it was very long, that the annotated reading somehow was losing the interest to some of the kids. Is there any change in that this year?
Yeah, I definitely think that was part of the teachers' adaptations to different pieces of the materials this summer. They reflected on their students' response to them last year. You know, they could expect that the students this year might perform similarly, and I think they just had built in a lot more flexibility in general as to how, you know, how much time might be spent on a particular piece.
And just the familiarity with the readings, I'm sure. That takes time and real-time experience, though. But I'm glad to see that this atmosphere just continues to grow. I think that's terrific. And then the other thing I really was excited to hear humanities become coined as a department because some of my most favorite literature, I liked it so much because of the deep social studies components. It really helps you understand the characters, and I certainly see the relevance that at the secondary level. And I'm assuming and thinking that this is just a real good opportunity for teachers to, you know, do that little bit extra focus and find those ties of social studies. So, again, some of the concern that social studies is going to evaporate a bit, I think it's a great opportunity to show that that's just not going to happen, so.
Well, and part of that is certainly some component of direct teach, but it's also helping to create an inquiry mind for our kids to say where, to have them see those connections. And that's where we know the power, and we've really developed those transferable skills. And it doesn't need a teacher to point those out, they can see those connections, and that's where it becomes really powerful.
Well, great work, so thank you so much for your efforts.
Thank you.
Sue?
Yes, a couple of questions. Well, first I just want to say the humanities thing is really good because the old-fashioned way or the siloed way just didn't make any sense. You know, in the real world, kids go out, and if they're doing a job, they're not going to just do math for a half an hour and just do so, you know? So this just makes a lot of sense, and I really appreciate that. Two things that I heard you say tonight that caught my ear, the eighth grade capstone project. Could you tell me a little bit about that?
It was done last year here at Spry, and it was through Creative Collaborations. And I just spoke with Zach Anderson, the English teacher, a little bit about it, but they had, they had each student identify a significant question, historical question. And there were several pieces to the project, and they shared the results with everybody. And in fact, it was just two teachers who started it, and it turned into being so exciting that all of the social studies and English teachers did it. So I can't give you much more than that right now, but...
It was based on historical content, and then the research was supported through the ELA classrooms. And so really building those cross-content skills. And what was interesting that we heard was students who weren't in the house that this was in were asking their teachers, how come we're not doing this? And how come we're not building these connections? And that really led to a building-wide adoption of this.
Right, so that project-based learning.
Yes.
Which is great stuff. The other thing that I heard was, I think it was Kate or Melissa mentioned, you're looking for on-grade reading levels by third grade. How are we doing with that?
Well, I think that's one of the things that we are constantly trying to ask ourselves. You know, are our students at K-2 on pace to be reading on-grade level by third grade? And there are obviously a lot of different indicators for that, but we've been looking for, you know, ways to expand that benchmark to more kids for a long time. We have a number of different ways that we look at it through our grand rounds and data days process with early literacy indicators and things.
So you use multiple measures?
Yep, yeah, we do. And, you know, I think the thing that we've noticed the last number of years really is that we'd like to open up that opportunity to more kids, and so focused attention on some powerful resources for our K-2 classrooms is a priority, yeah.
And this year, for the first time, all of our K-5 teachers are actually implementing, it's called a benchmark assessment. And what it is, it's an intensive assessment where a teacher sits down with a student and really gets a very good sense of where their reading level is at, and that allows them to be able to think about how do I then differentiate my reading, or my reading instruction? So we'll be very interested to see how that unfolds over the next little while, and then how that marries with some of our other programs such as our guided reading, because we think there are some really powerful connections there.
Great, very interesting stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
He's telling me to hurry up. Literacy...
I'm not supposed to tell people that.
Well, I got five minutes of questions alone.
We still have ten.
No, don't worry about it. He's worried about the Baltimore score or something. Literacy is really about making connections, and most importantly, that the students are making those connections. And one of our essential elements is this gradual release of responsibility. So I'm wondering how that all fits in with our formative assessments and probably how parents can figure that out through the report card. Tough question.
Yeah.
All right, think about it. Think about it. You know, something to think about.
I think that's really what we want to get at, right? And how, in the classroom, how do we help let go? Because it's hard, right? We see our students struggling, and we want to dive in right away, and also knowing when to let them fly, because I think oftentimes, and particularly, I think we found this last year in three through five, we went in thinking, our kids, this is too hard for our kids, this is too deep for our kids. And we found consistently, they rose to the occasion. They far exceeded what we thought that they could do. And how we capture that, I'm not sure. I think we need to continue having those conversations with our parents. I'm really excited for our conferences. We're going to have two conferences this year, and where parents and teachers will be able to sit down, and those conversations, those one-on-one conversations, be able to say, you know, Suzie, here's what I'm seeing, here's the evidence in the classroom, and here are some things that I'm going to be working on, and here are some things that you can help out too. Because I think, obviously, I think all of our parents, what do we want? We want the best for our kids, and the more we can have that open line of communication, I'm really excited to see the possibilities for that.
Sue hinted at this, and Larry, you hinted at it a little bit, but sometimes when you give a board member some information, it's dangerous. We recently went to a workshop where we heard about project-based learning, and it could also be concept-based learning, and it kind of excited us. Are there any real strong plans to bring that into humanities?
Well, I think the Model UN project in and of itself, and that's been longstanding. One of the exciting things that we're starting to see are English 10 teachers really seeing how can I help support that in the classroom? And so I think that, continue to cultivate that. I think it'll be interesting to see as the new social studies frameworks unfold, where some natural connections might be there as we think about, you know, it's not about the nitty-gritty details, those are important, we need to know detail. It's about those thematic understandings, and how can we carry theme across time and space? And I think our ELA colleagues really know how to support that and support the writing process as well, so I think there are some credible opportunities.
And Mike, the eco columns projects for fifth grade, where they design a terrarium and an aquarium, and I know it's totally, it's scientifically based, it's part of science, but I know that they are definitely reading about it and they're definitely writing about it as well, and that's certainly a project-based learning unit that they're just doing right now.
Yeah, thank you.
Again, the connections, collaborations are really great to hear about, particularly in the secondary level. But I'm also wondering, because I can, in my mind, I know how literacy fits in with technology. Does technology know how literacy fits? And it's probably a question not for this group right now, but it's just out there, you know? So, when the science people or the technology people come. But you should also be thinking about that.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. I think the writing handbook is a start at six-eight, having some common language that all of our teachers and students will know. I know one of our lead social studies teachers was talking about it, and what was, it was a team of teachers that prepared this, and they provided examples from all the content areas, and the report we got back from one of the buildings was the technology teachers were ecstatic because there was an actual example of writing in technology. Because oftentimes, when we see examples of cross-content, it's social studies and ELA, rarely do we focus on the writing opportunities in math or science or technology. So I think we're already starting to see that.
Well, thank you for the report. And Terry, if you're not busy after our meeting, you might want to stick around a little bit, all right?
For sure.
This does require a action board, so may we have a motion to accept the humanities report, please? Thank you, Mike will second it. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Kerem, our superintendent's report, please.
Thank you, Mike. First of all, we have approximately twenty bus drivers in the audience tonight. Wanted to thank you for attending this evening, and also just thank you for what has been, we know, a very challenging first four weeks of school. And we know that you have, your patience and your perseverance has been tested with our system crash and with many other things. So, we want to say thank you so much for all that you do for our kids and for getting nine thousand students, or many, close to nine thousand students, to their schools every day in a safe way, and for getting my two daughters, when they choose to ride the bus, when they're not missing it because they're dawdling inside, and you're getting them to Thomas and Willink. So, again, thank you to the bus drivers that showed up tonight. So, we have experienced a resurgence of summer, which is making all of the sporting events that I'm able to attend now that much more enjoyable. I love watching soccer and field hockey in sixty and seventy-degree weather instead of forty-degree weather. I love seeing all of your children in action on our many athletic fields, and this week and next are particularly big weeks for our Webster sports teams because it's homecoming. Students at Webster-Schrader High School and Spry Middle School have been celebrating Spirit Week all week long, which will culminate tomorrow in what I'm sure will be an amazing pep rally at Schrader. And I hope that many of you are able to join us at Schrader Stadium tomorrow night, 7:00 PM, for a football game against Rush Henrietta. And next week, it's Thomas's turn as the Titans celebrate Homecoming Week. The Titans football team will play Spenceport next Friday at 7:00 PM at Titan Stadium. And I know that I'm highlighting football, but there are so many other terrific Webster teams that will be celebrating homecoming games this week and next. The girls' soccer games, I know Mr. Suffolletto and Mr. Benz were there last night, watching both Thomas and Schrader pair off, actually. And you can find game times for your favorite team by visiting websterschools.org, and you just click on the calendar tab and then select Monroe County Sports Schedule to find your event, and it's up on the screen right now. These are some great events meant to be enjoyed by the entire Webster community. Come on out and support your Warrior. the calendar tab, and then select Monroe County Sports Schedule to find your event. And it's up on the screen right now. These are some great events meant to be enjoyed by the entire Webster community. Come on out and support your Warrior and Titan children and students and their sports programs. Staying with sports, just for another minute, I wanted to congratulate Greg Kennedy and Ty Lambert. Greg's on the left, Ty's on the right, and they're both of Webster-Schrader High School. Greg is a chemistry teacher, and Ty is a counselor. Greg and Ty were surprised on Monday during halftime of their volleyball match with a celebration of their 25 years of coaching boys varsity and JV volleyball. Greg coaches varsity, and Ty coaches JV. They are the only duo in New York State to have ever reached this milestone in their sport, where one is varsity, the other is JV, and they've stayed together for a quarter century. So thank you, Greg and Ty, for the coaching and the life lessons that you have imparted on so many of our students over the past 25 years. And the good news is, these two guys will be sticking around for many more years. So next, I'd like to draw your attention to three teachers whose lessons are currently featured on our website, websterschools.org. And they are currently featured for their exemplary lessons. The lessons of Aleah Shahada at Spry Middle School, Joanne Hamm at Webster-Schrader High School, and Brian Powers at Willink were recorded last year and are being shared online as a resource for parents and teachers. I'd invite you to take a look at the videos because these teachers are representative of the depth of learning and excellent lessons being imparted to our kids throughout the entire district. You can experience what it's like to be a student in these classrooms by clicking on the District News headline on our site's homepage. I mentioned homecoming earlier, but another highly anticipated event that is taking place for the first time this year in October is Senior Citizens Day. Now, normally, that day is done in November. This day is also very special to Mrs. Carmody, who was the coordinator of that day for nearly 20 years, I think, or a quarter century, but I won't say the actual time. It's set this year for Thursday, October 23, and is annually sponsored by our Board of Education. Senior citizens who live in the school district, in the Webster-Central School District, will be mailed invitations beginning next week. Our seniors will gather at Webster-Schrader High School to enjoy entertainment from Webster musical ensembles of our kids, along with a delicious meal and the ever-popular door prizes. It's an event that is not to be missed, and I know my mom and dad will be there as well. And lastly, an additional reminder for Thursday, October 23. So not only is Thursday, October 23, Senior Citizen Day, but it's also a half-day for our elementary students, K-5. It is the first of two annual parent-teacher conferences. This is a change from any year past, from our traditional conference schedule. So this year, we're going to have conferences in October, and then again in March. And so we'll have our very first conference on Thursday, October 23, and then on Friday, October 24. Parents, please remember that your K-5 students have a half-day of school on the 23 of October, Thursday, and a day off on Friday, October 24, due to the conference schedule. So be watching for more information from your child's school. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Carm. Okay, board members, we'll move on to some business that we have to take care of. The PTSA at Plank South would like to donate some money to the district for the expansion or replacement of the playground equipment at the Plank South Elementary School. So Rob and Linda, are you also going to come up, or is it just going to be Rob?
Good evening, board. We are excited to be able to share with you this proposal. At Plank South, we are, our playground's been there for about 20 years or so now. We have a primary playground and intermediate playground. So the primary one definitely needs some rework. So we are excited to share with you a proposal to replace that playground and to also consolidate, to put this new playground next to the current existing 3-4-5 playground. We do have an expanding enrollment of students at Plank South, so this playground will help with regards to that as well. So the current plans are for us to put this playground into effect, excuse me, over three phases over two years. The PTSA plans to raise approximately $70,000 for these phases. And they've already raised some funds that the plans are to put towards some swings, to actually start possibly this coming spring. And that's what we have to propose for you tonight.
Are there any questions from the board?
Just had the opportunity to attend Plank South's PTSA meeting, and I was very impressed with their plan. I mean, it was conscious to not overdo certain things. It was well-thought-out, well-planned. So I was just very impressed, and nice work.
Yeah, one of the big things was to make the playground more accessible for more students. So that's one of our big things.
You're all set?
I'm all set, thank you.
All set. All right. Thank you. We need a motion to accept the donation of monies.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Well, we got Mike not here for the vote. So it's five, one, two, three, four, yeah, five. Thank you.
And just to add really quickly, so Linda has done a great job in spearheading this initiative. So we're very pleased to have her backing us up here.
Excellent.
Excellent. Yeah, thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, board members, let's take a look at the Treasuries Report. So Jim, could you highlight it for us, please?
Sure. You have the August Treasuries Report in front of you. And for the month of August, there were receipts of just about $3.9 million. $1.8 million came in the form of sales tax, quarterly sales tax, that really gets recorded in June but received in August. The other large area is the accrued revenues and due from other funds. Those are transfers or revenue that was recorded in June also and received in August. So in our bank accounts at the end of August, we had just over $36 million in our savings and reserves. On page two, you have the School Lunch, Federal Capital and Trust Agency. And on page three, we'll look at our investments. And you can see that our investments remain the same as July, 0.8 to 0.15 percent in most of our accounts. And there was just over $39 million invested.
Questions from the board? All right, may we entertain a motion, please, to accept the report?
Aye.
Thank you. Paul's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jim. All right, the National School Boards Association Annual Conference is being held in March. The dates are actually March 21st to the 23rd. Registration opens up next, well, in two weeks. So we're wondering if anyone is interested. Now, Ann, you're going to the states. We do have money in the board budget to send someone. Tom, you're going with the New York We're opening it up. Anyone interested?
Can't make those dates.
I might be interested. It's just really hard for me to commit this far in advance. Do we have to designate, I mean, can we reserve a spot without deciding the person?
Because I, well.
Or do you want to go?
I went last year, so it's really not fair that I would go two years in a row, unless you want to send me.
I think it's a good conference, and we should send, well, Tom's going, and then I think at least one other person should go. So can we just sign up a, maybe we could pick a person and then just change it if we had to change it to another person?
Paul's early enough to be.
Then it's okay?
Sure.
Does that sound like a plan?
All right.
Okay.
So we agree on that? Okay, then we can move on. And we'll move to our school liaison reports. Ann, you want to start?
I'm sure. I haven't actually attended anything in the last week, but I will be attending Clem North on October 15. And if able, or if there is no other person able to attend at Plank South on the 21st, I would like to. Plus, I'm looking forward to the orencheering. I think that's always an exciting event, so.
Okay, thank you. Tom?
Yes, I attended the State Road PTSA meeting, their initial meeting, this past week. And they worked out very well on their budget, and they have some really nice plans to support the school activities for the year, to make the education as rich as possible for the children. And then just this past Tuesday, along with you, Mike, we just attended the open house here, which was well-attended.
Nice. Sweater was nice. Paul, anything?
Clem South did have their first PTSA meeting last week, and they are set to run their family fun night on Friday, October 17.
Thank you. Anything?
Yes. For Schlegel Road, they have a PTSA fundraiser, a chicken barbecue, on October 8. Their next PTSA meeting is November 4, which is a Tuesday. And as always, they have free babysitting. And last Friday, I was able to attend the football game at Schrader, but more specifically, the halftime show and the marching band. It was a great show, very good show. It was a lot of fun, and really appreciated that opportunity. So it was good. It was a good show.
The Plank North PTSA met last night, and David Peter, the principal, reviewed the outcomes and results from last year's goals, as well as previewed the current school year goals for those in attendance. Parents heard about the upcoming PTSA events, and the topics from the floor included transportation and communication concerns. And I would just like to go over the calendar for the next two weeks. On Monday, October 6, we have the WTA Executive Board. I'm seeing Tom, Ann, Sue, and myself are attending. Mike, Paul?
Yes.
No? Yes? You're going to be added?
Yes.
Okay. Then on the 7th, there is the Wen movie screening. Both Ann and myself will be going. Is that correct? And then there's also Sept on that night at 6:30, which is Tom and Ann, or it's Tom and Sue, sorry. Wednesday morning on the 8th, I will be attending the Spry Coco with the Principal. Anyone else? And you'll be doing the Willink one, okay? And are you also doing the Clem South Family Literacy Night? Okay. On Wednesday, the 15th, there's Clem North PTSA. It's in the morning. You've got that one, okay? Sue, on the 16th, at noon, Wen is meeting. Did you want to go also?
Yes.
Okay, so that'll be on the 16th. And just to alert.
Where is that?
It's at the Aquatic Center. Just to alert everyone, Saturday, October 18, marching band fanfare. Hopefully, the weather is nice. So I'm sure, I know I'll be going. Tom will probably go.
Actually, you can get the national schools.
Okay. So the other people. Mike, I'm sorry, you were out of the room. Do you have any report on a liaison or anything?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to our Monroe County reports. Sue, anything from, well, staring didn't.
October 29 is the next meeting.
And legislative? Ann?
How about Tom start?
Basically, the Subcommittee reported their full funding public education draft position paper. They made a few changes to the paper, but it was extremely well-done. And we'll be using this to work with our legislators and senators to see what we can do to create a more substantial funding and a more consistent funding stream, let's put it that way. Thank you. Ann, did you?
Just, there, one of the things that was shared was the Smart School Bond Act that's coming up for vote shortly, and just how little attention it has garnered in the news. And so it is just to call people's attention to the fact that this is an act that if voted approved, does provide funding to school districts for various eligible items, including infrastructure and computers and other things. But just to be aware that it's coming.
One of the things that's been discussed about that is the length of the bond that the school district could pay for it, and then the traditional, just the idea that the obsolescence of the computer equipment that you do buy will probably be, well, you know, really obsolete by the time your 20-year bond is upper.
So the bonds are 20 years?
I think that's what was in, that was still unclear, but.
Maybe generalism wrote that, but.
The last I heard was 20.
The last I heard was 20 years.
Yeah. And you could have a computer in front of you for maybe three to five, and then you have to get something new because you're just not keeping up.
The original conversation was around infrastructure stuff, which lasts a lifetime. Once you start adding computers and printers and those type of devices.
In reading through that, in reading through the legislation, though, they're talking about infrastructure for the school. So for instance, we needed to put in Wi-Fi. So you make the infrastructure of your school, correct, but do you have the feed infrastructure? Because if you notice driving down a thruway or some of the roads, and you watch the bars on your phone, when you pull into a rest stop, there's a phone tower nearby, and you're all maximum bars. But then you get somewhere between the rest stops, and it drops off. So it's like I built a satellite dish, but it can't be fed to me because there's nothing coming in. So it could be putting in great infrastructure in the school and not be able to feed it. And I know the intent of this legislation was to try to prepare for the computer-required testing that's going to be coming up in a couple of years. And that's still up in the air. So there was nothing about that other part, the feed part. And that's a little, makes you a little nervous.
So I think it's just to be aware, it is an initiative on the ballot. And secondly, as it gets closer to Election Day, I'm sure there will be more information. So to be as knowledgeable as you can.
So the public is voting on it, as opposed to our legislators?
Oh, it's on the, it's on the November ballot.
I didn't get that. Okay.
Thank you. This coming Wednesday, Information Sharing will have a meeting, and the topic will be food service regulations. Are you interested in it? Have you called in, and do you want Cindy to call in for you? You did. Okay. Then the following Wednesday is Labor Relations, and the topic is going to be tenure issues. So I know, I'm not sure if Fritz is going. I will be going. I don't know, well, Sue will probably attend.
What day is it?
Wednesday.
It's Labor. It's the Wednesday 15th, noon.
Holiday in airport.
Okay. Okay. Tom, anything from New York State School Boards Association?
No, just gearing up for the convention, and the registration write-down, year-to-date this year versus last is about 300 students, 300 registrations ahead of last year. So it's looking to be well-attended.
And Ann, would you give us a little summary of what you learned?
Yes, on Saturday, I attended the Area Two Resolutions Review Session in Canadega. It was well-attended. Basically, the group did agree with our board's take on the proposed resolutions that we all spoke about briefly at our last meeting. There were just two particular ones that there was some lively debate on. And so I would just like to share a little bit of that debate. So if there's any interest in voicing a different opinion, I'd like to know that before the conventions. The first resolution that was discussed is really one that ties funding to professional development for the implementation of Common Core and other initiatives. And Fairport has indicated that it is likely to offer an amendment that would strike Common Core from the resolution, so as it did not limit districts' interpretation or whatever for that funding. Certainly, there is agreement, we need sustained funding for professional development. And so that was certainly unanimously agreed to. So some of the conversation was, if you strike Common Core, it doesn't prevent your district from taking that funding to support the implementation as you choose. So there, obviously, that was one area. It was a lively debate. And I am looking forward to hearing from other conversation about that. So if you have any specific instructions for me on how you think I should vote, or if you would just like me to discern a vote after listening to additional feedback. Okay, that sounds good. And then the second one was also about funding, but as it relates to full-day kindergarten. And there were a couple of concerns about where the other money is, where that money would come from then, because it's not likely that the coffers in the state are going to grow tremendously. There's great concern for one-time infusions of monies. And one school district, actually Utica, had an issue where they received a grant that they were able to hire Somali-speaking. they were able to hire Somali-speaking residents because it had such a large influx. But unfortunately, the grant ran out, those positions went away, and the inability to sustain that support was very difficult. So, that's another potential amendment out there that I'll, again, just be mindful of, and I believe I have a sense of your feelings regarding those topics. There is also likely to be two additional resolutions offered. One is very specific to a school district in New York City. You've all been reading about the Orthodox Jewish school. I can't think of the name of it, and I apologize for that, but that's a narrow resolution that will be brought up, freeing or obligating school districts to provide all services to those private schools, and that, of course, is a funding concern. And then this...
So, that's one district specific?
Yes.
Yes.
Pineview, I believe, is the name of it. And then the second...
How do you do that? I mean, yeah, okay.
Democracy. The second resolution is going to address, although there was no specificity about what they were going to address, but of the unaccompanied minors that we have all been reading about in the news, half of them are in New York. And so, the tremendous financial costs that school districts are facing because of that. And again, nobody seems to know what this resolution is going to be covering, just that we should anticipate that one is likely to be brought forward. So, it's possible it will not, but it is, again, one of these two. And then one of the other resolutions has been already withdrawn, but it was a kind of a minor one, so.
So, I have a process question. So, when these, when additional resolutions are brought up at the business meeting, then the resolution committee doesn't have any time to formulate a response?
Well, hopefully...
It's all done just on debate at the table.
But it's also possible it will be at the next resolutions discussion, which is basically Monday, October 27th, so before we would actually have to vote.
Okay. So, there will be time to talk.
But I can't guarantee you either, but...
We need an A-plan and a B-plan.
Well, I don't even know A-plan period. I'm just letting you know a resolution is likely to come forward.
Traditionally, depending on what happens there, even though the resolution was brought forward, if there's something brought forward the day of the business meeting, and it hasn't been pre-announced, there has to be an acceptance of two-thirds to be able to even talk about it.
Okay.
And so, it depends on how long the meeting's gone, where the delegates are at to see, you know, this is for one school district, whatever, we don't want to take it on at this time, and they don't vote, they don't extend the time of the meeting. So, there are parliamentary procedures that should go through to add those on. We'll see what happens.
And Jay Willrona would be there to...
Jay and Lynn will run the meeting.
And then, Mike, you did have some concerns about the resolution supporting Common Core teacher certification alignment that is obviously meant for higher ed. There was some debate about that as well, and although it did pass amongst the group, there were four people that did vote against it, or four districts, and a couple of reasons of concern. One of them is, at no time during that, during, for those certification parameters, is classroom management discussed, and that was a concern. And then, Mike, just as you had discussed, the art, you know, losing the art of teaching, that was actually also discussed, being that regimented. So, although it did squeak by, I suspect there will be more debate about that, again, as we individually do group on that, so.
Thank you.
But it was interesting.
Earlier tonight, the Audit Committee and the Board met with our auditor, Ray Wagner, and we received a very positive report. I don't know if any of the Board members want to comment on that? No? It was just a very good report. Sue, anything on policy?
Our first meeting is November 6th, and I just realized, and thank you, Cindy, for setting that up, but we set the meeting for 6:30, but we do have a regular Board meeting at 7:00. So, could the people, could people come at 6:00? That would be Mike, Ann, and Brian. Okay, so we're going to do it at 6:00 then. Thank you.
Tom, anything else? We got a meeting next week.
We've got a meeting next week. Sue and I will attend.
Yep. Strategic planning, October 16th, waiver.
Okay. We would like to alert people that, starting Monday, there will be an online survey where individuals can provide input into defining the essential qualities and attributes of our next Webster Superintendent of Schools. We would appreciate your thoughtful response to this brief survey, and the survey will be on the website until Friday, October 17th. And the website is websterschools.org. And if you do not want to do the online survey, paper copies are available in all of our offices of our buildings, as well as the libraries in Webster and in Penfield. Okay, that takes us to our consent agenda. Board members, you've had a chance to look at it. This is accepting recommendations from the Superintendent on the Minutes, personnel actions, the Committee on Special Education, the Committee on Preschool Education, a wall board bid, and the trip to Costa Rica. So, we need a motion to accept the consent agenda, please.
I'll make that motion.
A second, please?
A second.
Thank you, Tom. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're going to make the assumption Ann and Mike voted yes to the consent?
Yes.
Okay. Opposed? Carries. Our next Board meeting is Thursday, October 16th, and I'm going to ask the Board to just stay after, for a few minutes after we adjourn. So, may we have a motion to adjourn, please?
So, who?
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.